Hi, my name is Bob Hiss. I'm the Milton Town Moderator. And this is a show that I started conducting a few years ago with the Chair of the Warrant Committee prior to any of our town meetings, where we have an opportunity to go through the warrant, which by the way, if you're a town meeting member has come to your home, or if you look on the town website, you can download from the town meeting page, or there are copies available in Town Hall. Because our annual town meeting is coming up on Monday, May 6. It's always the first Monday in May. It's going to be 7:30 PM as usual in the high school auditorium. And I'm joined tonight by the Chair of the Warrant Committee, Mr. Dave Humphries. Dave, thanks for attending tonight.
My pleasure, Bob. Thank you.
I think an upgrade is the fact that we've got these cool Milton Access mugs. And I guess that means they're a free parting gift from the staff for guests' thumbs up in there. So what do you know? We've got a little Milton schwag to go along. So what we've done in the past is to run through the articles in the warrant and have the Warrant Committee Chair explain just a quick summary of what the article is and some background of the recommendation that they're going to present on the floor of town meeting. So with that, I'll turn to page 15. By the way, I think we have 46 articles. Is that right? If I look at my list, I think that's right. In general, 39. We have 43 articles. Okay. So Articles 1, 2, 3 are pretty standard. Town accountant, hear about the reports of officers, talked about the town treasure, those typically perfunctory, early business we take care of. Why don't we jump to number 4, which is the capital budget? Anything particular that stands out here this year that's interesting? I'll tell you what jumped out at me was a year ago at this time, we were talking about the land swap and a potential new school. And I see here we have on top of page 16, $2 million for Cunningham School attic buildout, which looks like something that's trying to go ameliorate some of the school overcrowding that we've discussed.
Potentially.
So that's pretty substantial.
That's a lot. You know, sort of jumping ahead a little bit with regards to capital, the capital budget, there was discussion with regards to the sums from the capital budget. Because when we talked about the school budget, there had been a request from schools for monies over and above year over year. Okay?
In their operating budget.
In their operating budget. A big picture concept with regards to this warrant and with regards to this budget is it's a balanced budget. It's a balanced budget. And I pointed out in my comment, in my report of the Warrant Committee, some of the circumstances or some of the facilities that were put into place to allow this to happen is that it was year level, year to year, there was 2.3 to 2.5 million of one-time funds that were from free cash, the last of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA money, a one-pay period health insurance premium holiday for active employees. That's Article 7. Zero funding of the stabilization fund. That's Article 31. And additional funds, approximately $2.5 million. And that's going to be from now on. So we should see that money as a year, every year, hopefully. We're made available to the town through retirement budget becoming fully funded. We have fully funded the town retirement budget. So we're going to start to see, this year it's 2.5 million. And the no action on supplemental requests from any department, which was about, there were $3.2 million approximate in supplemental requests. By use of all of these things, we were able to put forward a balanced budget.
Without an operational override request.
Without an override.
Okay.
But a couple of things stand out there, such as the no money to stabilizations. That's a zero. People will see a zero at Article 31. Then, schools came and said, listen, you know, there's approximately $245,000 of need that we need to have, we need. And so they proposed with regards to this capital budget that we're talking about on page, what was that, 14?
15 and 16.
15 and 16. Is that here, there were some, not the 2 million for Cunningham, but there were some monies that were, would have been earmarked for projects at the schools. And they had asked that those monies, like for Chromebooks and for, where are they?
Is it the school technology, replacement of network hardware and end-user devices?
That would be it.
The 500,000?
Yeah. So it takes some of that, some of those monies, it was for some of the monies that would have gone from the replacement of network hardware and end-user devices. And I believe the floor scrubber and cleaning equipment would have added up to 245. It was our recommendation that we not do that. And that, you know, the capital projects, the budget for capital projects, it's a very involved process. For the committee meets, they have a five-year horizon where they look at needs for the town, mainly the purchase things, such as you see the trucks. You see lots of trucks.
Sure.
Right? You see flooring, you see equipment. And so is that we were not inclined to approve one time, it was mainly salary that they were asking for. And so I think the Warrant Committee's recommendation is a large part based upon respect for the process of the capital projects for that committee and the purpose for which, why we have this line item in the budget. Now, that being said, I can report that as of last night, the Select Board did approve allocation of the funds that could meet the request for schools, the 245,000 that's coming from a money that we now have available to us from the state.
We'll get to that during the school article then.
Okay.
Okay. So just to summarize, so we've got 5.76 million, about four and a half from bonded, which will borrow about 1.3, which will come out of operating, non-bonded capital items. And what the schools were saying is can we take 245,000 of this capital and reallocate it to their operating budget?
Yes.
And the Warrant Committee's point was, the capital committee had stack ranked these, and these are the top items in there. And there's probably another couple dozen, or if not more, things that fell off the list. And you didn't think it was appropriate to then reduce the whole amount of this capital process and reallocate to an operating budget while not giving those other capital items that fell out this time a chance to come back in?
Right.
Is that the gist of it?
Right.
Okay. Got it. So there's a lot of back and forth on this. And I think the Select Board and the Warrant Committee were united in that opinion, I believe, from reports I've seen. Okay. So we'll go through this and see if any members have questions on this. Very good. Article 5, we're talking about the audit. It looks like it's going up by a small amount, but we're required to do the audit. But any controversy on this?
No.
Nope. Okay. You're recommending that we do approve the audit. Very good. Number 6 is about, a typical one we see, you know, funding cost items not in the departmental budgets. Usually the settlement of joint labor agreements. I've seen this year after year. Any particular issues?
No.
So you're recommending we do approve that almost $900,000?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Article 7, we're talking about employee benefits. And this is not for the retirement, you mentioned before, but this is for the current employees. And it looks like retirement numbers have been marching down. Group insurance numbers have also been marching down a little bit, which is at least up to 14 and down to 13.9 this year. Is that, any background on how that happened?
I don't. I'm sure that there's a detailed answer. I don't want to give an answer on that.
Okay. Very good. On Article 8, we're looking at the unemployment benefits line item. It looks like an uncontroversial number that's roughly in line with prior numbers.
Yes.
So the Warrant Committee is in favor of that? Got it. Article 9 is on updating some positions as identified by the Select Board and the Personnel Board. There's typically the long list of all the recommended levels and hours per week. And it looks like you had on page 25, some changes to these submitted by the Select Board. Any particular stories of interest behind these?
No.
Yeah, they typically get passed by town meeting on a pretty non-controversial basis.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Article 10, we're into public safety, which is inspectional, fire, emergency management, police. What did you hear from the police and the fire and inspectional, et cetera, this year?
I mean, it's year over, it's level funding.
Okay.
That's what we heard. And so obviously, they have requests for more on needs-based. But this budget, it's a, it's a, it's level funded. So that's what we're going to, you know, that will be the story with all of the departments.
Okay.
Is that it's year over year.
Okay. I do note in one of your comments that we know the new central fire station is up and online.
Yes.
Beautiful building. So glad that it's, the Fire Station Building Committee has come through. The chief seems to be pretty pleased with the outcome of it. And so the operation of that new building is now in this budget.
Yes.
So great. But by the way, this doesn't include anything for the building of fire stations. This is now just running the building that's already been built.
Right.
And the other two that are online, that are ready to come online as they get renovated and reconstructed. Okay. Then general government is the other town departments, pardon me, departments. On page 27, so accounting, insurance, law, IT, et cetera. Anything noteworthy this year out of any of these items?
No.
No? Okay. Again, level funded, general support from the town administrator to put these forward?
Yes.
Okay. And uncontroversial with the Warrant Committee?
Yes, basically, yes. We had a vigorous discussion with regards to it, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, we voted for the level funding.
Okay. And then Article 12, we have funds related to the various boards that are across town. So these are giving them some basic petty cash, as it were, to go run their, run their operations.
Yes.
Conservation, planning, personnel, master plan, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. And again, relatively uncontroversial.
No.
Passed typically from year to year. All right. Very good. 13, Community Preservation Act. I think this will be the second year we've now brought this forward after it was passed a couple of years ago.
Right.
Could you describe some of the things you heard and learned when they came and presented this list to you?
It's just great. It's the Community Preservation Act, it's just, it's a wonderful program for, you know, people of the Milton to be able to make the town a better place and to, and to give, you know, the people of the town and of the surrounding communities a beautiful place. You know, things like restoration of headstones at the Milton Cemetery, the art center window study, you know, to help with the parks. It's just good. It's a lot, it's a lot of money. It's a lot of money that we're able to put into, back into the town. So on this one, total funding is $1,167,571.
So the process again for the viewers is the committee for the CPA committee, here's submissions and applications. They then come up with their recommendations. They bring them to you. Did the Warrant Committee make any changes to any of these recommendations or accept the work of the committee as?
We do. We accept the word. I mean, it's the same kind of thing as with the capital, with the capital budget committee is they do the work. And so the proposals for their project, anybody can send it in. They have, they have a website. And if anybody has an idea, they can, they can send it in and they'll look at it. So, you know, I think that we, you know, we, because it does involve money, it goes to town meeting, there's a requirement for town meeting to approve the expenditure warrant committee, we make a recommendation. I think that there's, I think it's appropriate that we show a lot of deference to that committee and to the hard work that they do. And it's always, it's, it's, it's a nice reveal to see what they've come up with.
Okay. Very good. Then moving on to Article 15, this is about public works and solid waste. Numbers are creeping up a little bit. Anything stand out from the presentations by those departments this year?
No.
No? Okay. In effect, approaching level service or level funding, would you say?
I mean, I, it's, because it's one of the, it is what it is, is that the, it's level funding, is it level service? It always seems like the departments are able to stretch a buck.
Mm-hmm.
Right? They can really stretch a buck. So it seems like the farther they have to stretch the buck, the more service we get for each buck. So, but, you know, with waste management, you know, there's contracts that they have with regards to getting that done, the fees that are associated with the barrels, et cetera, et cetera.
Like recycling had a 3% increase and some of the processing had a 4% increase.
Right.
So these are the things the town has negotiated with the suppliers to try to keep prices in line.
And so that's built in. There's only so much that they can do. And they have strategies for how to get the best rate they can. So again, it's, it is, it's, it's level funding.
With some basic inflationary reality baked in.
Yes.
Okay. Understood. As we get to Article 16, we're now getting into the water sewer and the stormwater. So water, as you've mentioned, really comes to us from the MWRA. But notice that the numbers have edged down in the water enterprise. Did they get an explanation to the Warrant Committee for the reason for that? Well, meanwhile, the sewer is going up on the.
I'm sure that they, I'm sure we did. I cannot remember what it is, so I don't want to say something that would not be correct.
But it's really dollars that are coming in from the MWRA to the town.
Right.
And the same for the sewer enterprise.
Right. These costs, these costs are set. And again, it's one of those, it is what it is. It's going to be what it's going to be.
Right. Okay. Very good. And on stormwater, a similar story, although it looks like they have got some money to work on some of the, I think that may be another article, where they're actually going to be able to do some work on some of the stormwater and sewers in a different budget articles. So this is managing the whole stormwater system. And this is again, something that's allocated out to all the citizens on that separate line item we got.
Right. It's the enterprise fund.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Article 19, this is about the Chapter 90. And these are getting funds for roads that are going to be spent by the town and then reimbursed by the state. So it's an annual process we go through for roads.
Yes.
Each year. Right. Anything particular new or surprising in this line item?
No, because these, this is a program that we are involved in every year. There's an amount that we're entitled to, an amount that we can get as per this program. So I think that what we do is we max it out, we get it. And so that's what this dollar amount is this year, $626,278.
Okay. Towards the rehabilitation of roads or construction, et cetera.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Article 20 is what I was thinking of. So this is the, the cost for working on the water system. So it's going to be some additional, almost $600,000 to be able to work on the pipes and the tanks, et cetera, that bring water into the town.
Yes.
Okay. Any changes to the recommendations that the Warrant Committee made on that?
No.
So going with the recommendation of the Select Board. Got it. And 21, same for the stormwater system. This is following the recommendation of the Select Board there?
Yes.
Okay. Board of Health, looks like it's gone up since FY '23. I know there was a lot of support for the Health Department during and after COVID. Is it just looking like it is reflecting that, that support?
I think so. The...
But it looks like there was one expense that did decline at the top of page 41.
Right.
We had opioid settlement expense treatment, which was changed. And so that caused a decrease. As you see, the 491 we had in '24 down to the 420, we've got in FY '25. So it looks like there was like, like reduced amount that came through that we can appropriate based on that settlement.
Exactly. So that's the big, that's the big change there is that there is the 75,000 from the opioid settlement. And also, there was an increase of 4,536 in training and education. So it's essentially, it's essentially year to year when one takes into account how the budget had been bolstered by the opioid settlement.
The one-time settlement. Okay.
Right. And those are, but those are, I'm not great on the opioid settlement because it was, it was, there's several years of it. And then there's sort of direction of how it can be spent and where it can go into a budget. And so what we're seeing here is that it's, this opioid settlement money is not being reflected in their FY '25 appropriation.
Okay. Okay. Article 23 is about libraries. Again, this would have been presented by the library director, Mr. Adamcheck, and the library trustees. The Warrant Committee's support of their budget requests and recommendations?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. 14, sorry, 24 is on cemeteries. Same. It looks like it's gone up from 870 to 950 over a couple of years. But what's the Warrant Committee think? Whether they're supportive again of the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Down to parks and rec, also 100,000 increase over, over two years, almost that. But the Warrant Committee seems supportive of that line item as well.
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Then we get the schools. And so this is where your opening comments really come back into play. So the budget last year was 61.6, and now it's 66.9, almost 67 million. So maybe we'll get to that point that after this article, this warrant was printed, the state allocated the town an additional, roughly $300,000 in additional funds, and I got notified this by the town administrator, that could be awarded to the schools. And interestingly, that is in excess of about, I think it says 245,000 that the schools had asked be moved from capital to operating expense. And so I suspect that when we get to the floor of town meeting, the Select Board and the school committee probably would have approved increase in the school by that amount. And the Warrant Committee would probably have voted on that by that. So we may see what we would call a green sheet as a new presentation and a revision to this school department to reflect the increase of those funds from the state. Is that, did I summarize that pretty correctly?
Yes. So right. So there's going to be, we know there's probably going to be, right now, at least three items that we will be addressing between now and the town meeting. This will be one of them. So Warrant Committee, we will meet, I think we will meet next week to address that. And then there's money with, there's a health insurance adjustment. And then there's funds with regards to how we're going to handle funds with regards to the rehabilitation of Lower Giles Road. Because there's some of the money that, I believe it's ARPA money, that is, that is going for that. Again, it's kind of like with the opioid settlement, a lot of times with these funds that there's restrictions and timelines and of how the money needs to be spent. So we're going to be looking at that money to make sure that it's available for that rehabilitation. So there's a couple of matters we know of that we're going to address between now and the town meeting that we would green-sheet. This would be one of them.
Okay. Very good. Then we get to 27. This is for the Blue Hills Regional Technical School. And I think if memory serves, this is really based on the number of Milton students that attend.
Yes.
And so the number fluctuates on kind of a dollar basis with the number of students that we, we send there. So when the numbers go up, we have more students there. When the number goes down, we have fewer students there. Is that?
Yes.
The gist of it? Okay. Article 28, we're on to Consolidated Facilities, which manages all the buildings. Any controversial items or points in this?
No.
Okay. So this, it's got an extensive list. If you look in the comments, it's the schools, it's the art center, it's police headquarters, the firehouses, et cetera. So they've got a pretty broad remit. And again, they look like another group that knows how to, as your phrase, stretch a buck.
Right. If it's, if it's got a roof, they take care of it, pretty much.
That sounds like a good tagline for their department. If it's got a roof, we take care of it. Okay. Then in 29, we've got debt, interest in maturing debt. So we need to authorize the fact that we're going to pay interest. We're going to have some debt we'll need to continue to authorize. And in the comment, this talks about the debt service for the fire station building, which is short-term borrow we did related to the new Milton Fire Station headquarters. So this will be paid usually debt exclusion funds that we authorized before, which someone, some teams refer to as the Hurley Amendment. So this allows us to fund some of these capital projects with funds that the town has set aside. And also, of course, the school, the town meeting did authorize the reconstruction of the three fired houses. And I think two years ago, and those are moving along, I think at pace. Then on MWRA, this is rescind authorized but unused portion. So it looks like we authorized borrowing money, but don't need to. Is that the gist of it?
Right. So it's not just MWRA, it's also, you know, some roadways money there. Right. Exactly. Is that, this is housekeeping, accounting, is that in the past, the town meeting has authorized certain funds to be authorized. And then when they, when we do not fully execute on that, what we do is we rescind it, just to clean up the books.
Got it. Got it. Okay. And avoid the town having to borrow money and pay you for some of the debt and pay it back. So that's a good thing. Stabilization Fund, this is on 31. This is what you referred to at the beginning. In order to help balance the budget, this is one of the items that you're recommending against what you'd like to do, but it sounds like you had to do.
We don't have to do anything. We're persuaded.
Ah, okay.
By the arguments that were presented to us of the need to have a year-over-year budget. Don't love it, but there it is. Donut. Stabilization Fund, FY '25.
Okay. And down at the bottom, we can see what the balance of those funds are, almost $6,102 and a quarter million dollars, roughly.
Yes.
Okay. Onto Article 32. This is post-employment benefits liability. So post-employment benefits are those things we pay to our retirees.
Yes.
Anything that came up out of the ordinary in this line item?
No. Again, like the items like this, they, they are what they are. We get a number and we have an obligation to our employees to pay.
Okay. So it looks like in the comments, the Select Board is looking, there is an unfunded liability here, and the town is, the Select Board is looking for ways to keep chipping away at that every year. And this is a contribution toward reducing that unfunded liability.
Yes.
Got it. Very good. Then on Article 33, the reserve fund. So you're setting aside 250,000. Just for listeners, what's the difference between reserve fund and stabilization fund?
The, the way I look at it, reserve fund's kind of like the rainy day fund.
Okay.
And so that, the key there is extraordinary unforeseen.
During, in the operating budget during the course of the year?
Right. So you have money available. So that goes in. But then those expend, in order to expend, it still has to go to the Warrant Committee for a recommendation of approval of that. So that, that's our emergency money, if you will.
Got it. Okay. 34, this looks like they refer to them as the, let's call it the revolving funds. These are the fees that different organizations pay for use of the town's facilities. And your, all the different parks and the facilities that use those are listed here with the limits they're allowed to expend and collect based on those receipts.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Anything unusual or new in those revolving funds?
No.
Yeah, they typically pass without comment in my experience in prior town meetings. Okay. 35, PEG access. So this is funding the facility we have here.
Yes.
Again, anything new or extraordinary?
No.
Okay. And it looks like the warrant committee was in support. And then Article 36 is, I won't call it standard language, but it's something we see each year that permits the town, the authority to go deal with easements as they're working on roads, sidewalks, public works, et cetera. So we reauthorize this every year. And it looks like the warrant committee is in support.
Yes.
Very good. 37, so this is the special energy code. And it looks like it's got five or six, maybe eight paragraphs here that are substantive, but the warrant committee has a no vote. So could you give us the story behind this? On page 52.
So Article 37 on page 52, it refers to what we're calling here the stretch code. And what that is, is it relates to our building code. So a lot of our building code is given to us by the state. the question here in Article 37 is whether or not the town should opt in to what we're calling the stretch code. And what the opt-in means is that the stretch code is a statutory building code. And it's, it's included here. It's included here in the definitions and referred to at 225 CMR, 22 and 23. It says not including these dependencies. So that is the code. And if, when you go and you look that up, it's, it's lengthy.
So these, this isn't the code itself. These are references to the code provided by the state.
Right. So we would say it's incorporated by reference.
Okay.
So we did not print out, it's probably, it's probably, there's, there's two CMRs, 22 and 23. It's probably a total of 60 pages
Okay.
of single space legal code. And so the question is whether the town decides to opt into that and make that part of our building code. Now, the, it's, it's detailed. And so I would encourage the, you know, people to watch the presentations. I'm sure that there will be a presentation, there'll be a detailed presentation at the town meeting with regards to it. Essentially, what it, what it essentially says is this, is it says it accepts, it accepts as a starting premise that global warming is caused by human activity. And that in order to mitigate that, we, through our building codes, put, you know, reduce our carbon footprint in order to, again, mitigate the effects of human activity upon global warming and climate change. And so basically, what this is saying is that all new construction in the town would be required to meet this code, which would mean that the building has to at least be pre-wired for all electric.
Okay.
Doesn't mean that you have to be all electric at this point, but would have to be pre-wired. And then there's interplay in the code with regards to requiring solar panels in some situations, not requiring them in others. But essentially where it's going is in the direction of all electric. That's not the whole stretch code, but that's the, at the heart of it. And so our recommendation at the warrant committee was that the town should not adopt the stretch code. We have a comment here, a couple of highlights in the comment is this, is that we're early in on this opting into the stretch code.
The cities and towns around the Commonwealth, this is early, it hasn't been around that many years.
Thank you for that. Yes. It's, it's relatively new. So it's, it's part of the 2021 Climate Act commits Massachusetts to a net zero emissions by 2050. So this is 2021 act. Towns are opting into the specialized energy code. You know, to date, 33 cities and towns have done so. So part of it's the wait and see. And then as far as, you know, clarity, is that part of the concern that we have is that the Commonwealth can change the code. Once you have the building code, the Commonwealth can from time to time make amendments to the code. And once we opt in, we have, we have to, we are bound by whatever amendments come down the road. And so I, we wrote in the comment that this came up in our, in our conversations with regards to what does it mean when the Commonwealth sort of unilaterally tells everybody, you know, what they got to do, which we seem to be doing a lot of these days. We say in the past, it has seemed that there's no steady guidance with regards to amendments in the stretch code and that regulations have flip-flopped back and forth. We give an example of where we, we have seen it. Mass Safe sometimes requires fossil fuel heat sources to be removed in order to qualify for a rebate and sometimes does not, depending upon the whim of the regulators.
So if I summarize this then, we have a basic building code that comes down from the state and Milton must comply with that. Now the state has created in 2021, a stretch code that gives, with the goal of electrifying buildings in order to achieve net zero emissions. And they're giving the cities and towns the option of opting in to the stretch code, not required to, but to opt in. But once you do opt in, as they amend that code, in effect, it becomes part of your baseline. And if they modified what's currently the baseline, we'd have to follow it. And if we, they modify the stretch code, we would have to follow it. And I guess the warrant committee is saying, oh, less than 10% of the cities and towns have adopted it so far, 33 out of what, 351. It's only three years. It hasn't stabilized yet, so wait and see how this plays out. Does that summarize it for later in the year?
That's right. That's one, one of the major arguments that was brought up in support of our no recommendation.
And what was the recommendation of the select board or were there other organizations that came and presented, made their case here?
I, I do not know whether the select board voted a support or not. I know that this was submitted by the select board
I think that indicates they did, they did then vote their support.
Okay.
So it wouldn't get into the warrant unless they had supported it. Right.
Fine.
I know, by the way, I've been contacted by the Chair of Sustainable Milton and I think they'll, they will, will be making a presentation on the floor about their reasons for recommending the adoption of this stretch code. So we'll have
Good.
town meeting, we'll hear that discussion and we'll see how people vote.
Good. Good.
Okay. Very good. 38, this looks like it's taking some, we've seen this in the past, some land that's under the control, I guess, of the select board and moving it to control of the Conservation Commission. So
Right. This is, this is one of the articles that was held over from the special. So these are the marshlands over by the, by Cortland Circle.
So at the top of Granite Ave, by the entrance onto 93 and the DPW yard, that neighborhood?
Yes.
Up there?
That looks like that they had been under the care, custody and control of the town, which I think is the select board. And that they wanted to give it to the Conservation Commission, which looks appropriate.
Yeah. We saw this happen last year during the land swap where there were, I think there were 40 some odd acres that were part of Pope's Pond, were being administered by the select board. And the recommendation was to move it in its proper place, which is under the control of the Conservation Commission. So this sounds like it's the same thing for these five parcels.
Something like that.
Yep. And it looks like the warrant committee is in support. Okay. 39, I know is a citizen's petition for recording, expanding the recording audio or video of official meetings. The select board recommended referring this back. What's the, what's the warrant committee, sorry, the select board didn't, the warrant committee recommended moving this back. My mistake.
Right.
What was your logic?
So this, this again, was another one that was held over from this, from the special is that I think that what, what the, what the warrant committee wanted to do was to have a more expansive list of the boards and committees to be recorded. Is that, bear with me.
I think there were also some, a couple of boards that publicly, that discuss some issues that might have
Yeah.
private information in it. And the recording wasn't quite addressing how they would manage that was one of your concerns.
Right. Is that, is that there were concerns like at Board of Health, trustees of cemetery, there was a privacy issues, is that we might, we wanted to drill down and answer some questions more carefully with regards to how we can address the concerns that these, the Board of Health was, was the most vocal on this. Was how can we balance some of these concerns out? And so that was our recommendation.
Okay. So it was about, you were in favor of the transparency of video recordings, but had some concerns about, wanted to expand to some other boards and also address the privacy as the Board of Health and the cemeteries trustees discuss in their meetings.
Right.
Okay.
So we believe that, we want to see basically everybody recorded, but we need to balance this all out.
Okay. Understood. Article 40, so this is making the, what we might call the Lower Mills District in Milton, I think our first historic district. Is that right?
Yes.
So it's pretty extensive language. And I understand this was put together by the historic, local historic district study committee.
Yes.
So it was submitted to the, directly to the warrant committee, but it's got another no vote. But I also understand there may be some language changes that could be coming in the next few days because there are some thoughts that the historic district commission wants to include that are different than the language we're seeing in the warrant. And the warrant committee wants to review that language. Is that the gist of what is coming?
So as you said, this is, there's a lot here. Is that the, is that the local historic district study commission has been working for three years on this. There have been multiple drafts. At the special, it had been the recommendation of the warrant committee to continue working on it. And we did. We were involved with
So this came up at the special back in December?
Right. So this, so the language that's in here now, the language that's in this warrant is the language from the special.
Okay.
The warrant committee worked with the commission and, or worked with the study committee. And, you know, we've worked on more language. We discussed the new language during our deliberations on this article as we, you know, go into the annual. We did recommend a no at that time. That was a couple of weeks ago. Some of the, some of the main reasons, the main reason why the warrant committee was a no was due to the immense power that the commission would have with regards to creating its regulations and guidelines, if you will. Because this is a two-part process here. The first thing that happens is with regards to this article is we establish a commission and a district. So the district would be the Lower Mills, Milton Village Historic District. There's a map of it on page 65 of the warrant. The commission would be set up as per this article and it would become part of our bylaws. And so it's a two-part process. With regards to the commission, in the future, this commission will have the power to exercise in the administering and regulation of construction and alteration of structures and buildings in the district. When they create the guidelines, when they create the rules and regulations, that will be the basis for their administration and regulation of construction and alteration. What we see here is that they make the rules and regulations, then after a public notice period, they now are in effect. And we were concerned with the amount, that amount of power to be in an appointed body. That's, though they're not bylaws, like it would not be like, say, like the stretch code where we adopt as our bylaws, this code, which requires the approval of town meeting, is that, is that, is that this body seven would be able to make these regulations and 14 days later, they're enforceable and violation can incur these fines. And there was concern on the warrant committee that the fines could become quite heavy over time. But the issue really, anyways, that was a concern.
Okay.
So that being said, is that this is a, this is a process. It is ongoing, is my understanding as well, that the work of the local historic district study, study committee continues on. And that we are likely to see a new proposal as we go into town meetings.
So I saw in your comments, a few points. One, it's an all-appointed commission, not elected. And page 58, section 41 and 42 talks about who is appointed. So your, your first concern was it's a lot of authority for an appointed board. If I, maybe if I'm interpreting this, it's like a, a planning board for just that historic district to some extent. But our planning board is elected and this is appointed. So that was number one. The second was, I think you had points on, there's a constant discussion in town that you hear, I hear of the tax bases heavily reliant on our residences, our homes with very little commercial funding. And it looks like your comment is saying this is going to put further hurdles in charge of potential commercial development in one of the three commercial areas we have, you know, the central square, Milton Village and in East Milton. So that was number two. And the third ones, the fines are potentially stiff and they're higher than the town has authorized in the past, including back to 2013. And again, fines are authorized by an unappointed board, sorry, an appointed board, not elected board. That kind of summarizes the comments?
It does, yes.
Okay. Well, again, when we have these notes, I'm sure we'll have presentations. I know I've been contacted by the Chair of the Historic District Study Committee, who's going to make a, a presentation of the members and we'll see what the, the members want to do.
Indeed.
Okay. Very good. 41, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, looks like it's extending the term because they still have more work to do and the warrant committee is in support.
Yes.
Very good. 42 is, looks like it's asking to transfer land. This is again, that land swap, I think, for the 41 acres that I think are referred to as the Pope's Pond to authorize transfer into the Conservation Commission. And it's a citizen's petition. What's your, the committee's recommendation for a no vote?
Right. So this is another holdover from the special. Essentially, it was our, the warrant committee's position that the issue had been decided.
Back in the annual town meeting in May of 23, correct? So this was all part of that land swap. You're saying town meeting already approved that transfer of authority. Why do we need to do it again?
Indeed, yes.
Okay. Understood. I imagine some of the citizens here may make their case and so we'll hear what they have to say.
Undoubtedly, they will.
All right. Very good. And then 43, we have another one, which is citizen petition about speed limits on Route 28 and Chikatobet Road in that intersection of Randolph and 38, that, which we know is a dangerous one and is a dangerous one, and something that I know citizens are concerned about. But it looks like they want to remove that 25 mile an hour approach limit. Is that the idea?
Well, I guess the specific, the specific request or the specific question with regards to Article 43 is whether that we are going to, now, this language was drafted by the proponents of the article. What it essentially asks is for our town meeting to direct our state delegation to withdraw Bill S2301, sponsored by Senator Walter F. Timmeltie, Representative William J. Driscoll Jr., and Representative Brandy Flueker Oakley. And that bill seeks to establish a 25 mile an hour speed limit at that intersection. So it's seeking to ask our delegation to withdraw the bill, which is seeking to establish the 25 mile an hour speed limit. The warrant committee recommended a no vote. The main reason for this was, number one, I think the warrant committee did not have a problem with the speed limit at that intersection. 25 sounded, I think generally, people were fined with a 25 mile an hour speed limit in that intersection. Everyone knows how dangerous that intersection is. And especially if you're going up the hill towards Randolph, you gotta take a left on Chickatack. You know, you take your life into your own hands. So that being said, but then also, you know, the, the, the warrant committee was not persuaded that the reasons that they sought to the reasons why they wanted it, we were not persuaded by the reasons. And so, and, and, and the proponents brought forward some data, which with regards to showing a, what they claimed was a disparity in ticketing by the police by race. And it's saying that there was a relationship between, there could be a relationship between that speed limit, if it were established, and a disparity by race when it came to citation of, of drivers by the police. And, and we were just not persuaded that that connection had been made. And so I think that if, when we, when we discussed and evaluated the reasons which were put forward in support of this, we just didn't, we weren't convinced that the connection had been made.
Okay.
And then on top of it, there was a general feeling on the board that a speed limit there was a good idea. And so our recommendation was no.
Okay. But the specific language says from the citizens, they want to ask the, our elected representatives of this bill, S2301, to withdraw it, and instead return to the Mast Dot Rotary Plan. And so what you're saying is, no, we don't recommend advising the, the representatives to withdraw this. So this is kind of a non-binding request to those representatives.
And again, I'm not sure that if it's, if there's an automatic returning to the original Mast Dot Plan, I'm not sure if it's an if, then, thanks. So there's a lot of, are we choosing a 25 mile an hour speed limit over a rotary? It's just, it was not clear that that connection was necessarily there either.
Okay.
So all we're doing is we're just, our recommendation is we don't request our delegation to withdraw this bill.
Very good. So we'll let the citizens perhaps petition their representatives directly, without a recommendation from town meeting, okay? And that's Article 43, and that's our very last one. And then the, and we have the typical tables in the, at the back about facts and figures of budgets and departments and so on and so forth. Okay, very good. So just as a recap, we've got our annual town meeting starting 7:30 PM, Monday, May 6. Just a note, normally if we have overflow from Monday, we would go to a Tuesday and a Thursday, but there's a conflict with high school scheduling on the Thursday. And so if you look at the back of your warrant, you'll see the additional nights are May's, Tuesday 7 and Wednesday 8. And heaven forbid, we have to go to the following week. It's also, again, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I will do what I can with the help of the town meeting members to keep this within certainly one week. And perhaps, good Lord willing and the creek don't rise, we keep it to two nights. So I'm hoping for that. With that, I'm Bob Hiss, your town moderator. Dave Humphries, Chair of the Warrant Committee, thank you for joining us.